Okay, I'm good now. I want to say welcome to everybody. Thank you coming out for a nice day for a change. It's not raining, not cloudy, not wind blowing. The sun shines, so appreciate that. Before you have an agenda. And I have no changes, so.
Sorry.
That's okay. Is there any discussion on the agenda? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're up to recognitions. Miss Billy.
Alright, I've got several people to I want to recognize. I was able to attend the fair sale and we actually had four beef donated to the school district. Criticus Land LLC donated one and a half beef. Thunder Basin Coal donated one. Marlin and Mary Guyer donated half and J and H Oil and Gas, which is Jared and Haley Hanson, donated a beef. Also Grace Sandrini, she put out a little, I'll call it a flyer in the sale ad that CeeLo put together. And then Justin and Zanny Rich, they housed the beef for the weekend until they were hauled to Torrenton Forest.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other recognitions? I'd like to recognize our student rep. Casey, would you, you want to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself? You have to push the little green button.
Alright, well, thank you. Appreciate it. My name's Casey Matthews. I'll be a senior this year. Not really much else, I guess. I'll just try to be here for most meetings. It's like, I'm pretty new to the community, but so far it's been really tight and really accepting and I'm really appreciative of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. You're welcome, yes. Are there any other recognitions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Visitors comments. Stan, you're on the docket. Move on.
Screen, Byron. So I want to thank Chairman Reslin for putting me on the agenda. Didn't take long, we'll see how trained I am. I come in peace. So, last school board meeting, there was a section of the handbook that was addressed and dealing with drug searches, drug testing, dogs and all that. And when I was here and I heard it, you know, I just thought, I don't know, a lot of things jumped to my mind and I thought that I wanted to address it. And what I'm going to say, a lot of what I'm going to say here today is different than what I thought I was going to say. Cause I went into, did some research on search and seizures for public schools and and I found that the Supreme Court, New Jersey versus TLO says that the Fourth Amendment ban on unreasonable searches and seizures applies to school searches, but school officials do not require probable cause or a search warrant before searching students. Instead, school officials only need reasonable suspicion before searching a student. Reasonable suspicion, and they're talking about mandatory activities, okay? Not non-mandatory activities. Reasonable suspicion means that there is reasonable grounds before the search begins for suspecting that a search will reveal evidence that the student has violated school rules or the law and the search is reasonable related to circumstances justifying the search. Though school officials only need reasonable suspicion to search, note that the law enforcement officials such as police officers invited onto school grounds need probable cause, just as it would require any other situation. Need a reasonable suspicion or probable cause is required if the student consents. And school officials are not required to advise students that they may refuse this consent. Though the Supreme Court has not ruled on the issue, at least one federal appeals court has held that it is acceptable to tell the students that failure to consent will lead to a disciplinary action against the student. Beyond the search itself, the manner of the search must be reasonable. A reasonable search is one that is not excessively intrusive in light of a student's age, sex, or relatively seriousness. And what there you want to go on to talk about here is actually strip searching. It's not allowed for a lot of other reasons. Permitted school searches, no justification for search is required under the Fourth Amendment unless the person subject to the search has a reasonable expectation of privacy in the item being searched. Even when, even when an item is issued to a student for her use, if the item belongs to the school, then the student has no expectation of privacy for the use of that item. And they use school lockers as an example. And the student has no reasonable expectation of privacy in the locker, a fact which the court recognizes in the TLO case. Now this addresses non-mandatory activities, sports and such. The Supreme Court has treated general searches of the entire school population more leniently than individual searches. While a search of a particular student requires a reasonable suspicious suspicion justifying the search, the court has allowed drug testing without suspicion when the testing is given to all students who choose to participate in a non-mandatory activity such as playing football on the school team. Thus, the requirement of a urine test before participating in school sports is permissible. The court also found that it is permissible to acquire all students who wanted to participate in extracurricular activities such as choir or academic quiz competition to take a urine test for drugs. In both of these decisions, the school did not have any particular suspicion of any individual, but all students who choose to participate in the activity were subject to the search. The board placed significant weight on the fact that the students chose to participate in these extracurricular activities and these activities were not mandatory. If the student did not want to undergo a urine test, the student can forego these extracurricular activities. And then finally, some very general searches are considered non-intrusive so as not to require any particular suspicion to be reasonable. These are called administrative searches. To qualify as an administrative search, procedure must be directed at a general danger such as keeping firearms out of school and be non-intrusive. Okay, so that surprised me and but obviously, when you have a choice to take part in something and that requirement for that is to be drug-free, tobacco-free, alcohol-free, then that's on the student. So I just, so I wanted to say that and they also address dogs. You can bring dogs in to, you know, I, to like a non-activity type situation and search. So this gives the school huge power and I think my only appeal would be that it be used with discretion. Don't punish everybody for one person's. In the case of a sports, like say a football team or whatever, if from my understanding, it should be reasonable expectation that this is widespread in a team before a drug dog or, you know, that type of situation comes in. It should be widespread. It should be understood. I'll only say particularly on that is that if we're serious about helping our students, because what we're talking about is addiction. Okay? And if we're worried, if we're concerned about helping our students, then this is radical. But my opinion is I wouldn't suspend this student. I would suspend the activity. And I would put it at the onus on the team that unless you clean yourself up, you will not play. So, so I'm just going to go on to say that zero tolerance has never known to work. If it worked, we wouldn't be having this discussion right now. Back in my junior, senior year of high school, we, they, they put a smoking room in our high school for students because we were smoking in the bathrooms to the extent that we were lighting trash cans on fire and that type of thing. Also, the state of Massachusetts in my junior year changed the drinking age from 21 to 18. So it shows you what time and geographics and miles and cultures at one point seem okay with and then at another point become a toxic situation. So I would only say that this is a societal problem that students in school, they are, shouldn't be treated like criminals. They may have been broken the law or whatever, but they're not criminals. And what it says about the American the the American Bar Association says this about zero tolerance. Due process is little to say about the substance of the punishment imposed. Recently, so-called zero tolerance policies imposing mandatory suspensions or expulsion for certain violations have flourished. They have been, these have been rightly criticized for failing to match with the reality of adolescents' development because teenagers typically make mistakes on their way to adulthood. However, the Supreme Court held in Ingram versus Wright that the Eighth Amendment protection from cruel and unusual punishment does not apply in a school center. Proportionally in school discipline, therefore depends on the inclinations of local school authorities. So, and I'm, I'm gonna move on this a little bit. So I'd only ask too, and I wonder if you're giving the same attention to performance handsome drugs. PEDs. Steroids, stimulants, growth hormones, which the National Institute for Health National Library says between one and 12% of high school boys and 0.5%, 3% of girls report use of anabolic steroids with the highest rates found in male athletes competing in football, wrestling and weightlifting. I would hope that you're giving the same attention to these because these are illegal. These are controlled three substances. And I could list them, but I'm running out of time. So I'm hoping you're giving the same attention to this that you are to all the other drugs because these drugs have adverse effects. They, edema, they can be psychological, a lot of them. I'm not going to take time to read them, but I have the information for you. So I'd only hope that you give that attention to this. I'm just going to say that, like I said, my concern as far as addiction and drugs in school would be the person that's not in a high profile. The quiet person, person that slips on the radar. They're out of trouble. Their homework's never in, can't stay awake in school. And they're on the outside because they're either going through withdrawal or they're under the influence. And drug testing with the pot that we have nowadays. If a person smokes a pot like 10 o'clock the night before they come to school, they're going to test positive. So, and so I'm going to end by this because I don't know how long I get, but I think I'm going a little long. So I know about what I'm talking about because in my high school years, I never, I never took a sober breath in school. Okay? Every day that I went to school, I was under the influence of something because I was a person that suffered from addiction. And you're not going to stop somebody from, that suffers from addiction from using by scaring them, by penalizing them, by ostracizing them, by kicking them out of school for a year because that's going to increase their addiction. Education and understanding is the way to do it. So in 1989, when I graduated high school, seventy, I was seventy-three, I was eighteen, obviously. Nineteen eighty-nine, I came to a point in my life where I put down alcohol and substances that were killing me. I've been sober for 34 years. And in that time, I learned a lot about addiction. And what I'm here to say today is I would offer to be, to the school board, to the faculty, to sit and explain addiction in a way that you may have never heard before, in a way that's very comprehensible. And I'd also be willing to do that at a what the hell is it called? You know, an assembly. And I talked to Superintendent La Croix about what I'm talking about here, if he feels and that there's a way that I could be used. My, I've worked with substance abuse and I don't have a degree. My degree came from life. But for 34 years, I've worked with a lot of people with alcohol problems and substance abuse problems. And I've run 12-step programs. I run it here in Newcastle, matter of fact. So I just want to thank you. I just want to say that just saying no doesn't work, being scared straight won't work. Refusing people to bring drugs to school is not going to work. The only thing that's going to work is education. And I'm not advocating for drug use, believe me. I'm totally against it. But that's because of me. It has nothing to do with alcohol. I don't smoke either, but I used to be a chain smoker. And if I was going to smoke, I wouldn't suck on one of those pipes, those vape tubes, like that's just not going to cut it. And I guarantee you that there's adults in these schools that if they are smokers, they're smoking during the school day because it's an addiction. And what's the first thing adults do once they're addicted to tobacco? If a stressful situation happens, grab for a cigarette, right? It relaxes you. Same thing with children. They're coming here addicted to tobacco and other substances. And one of the first things they want to grab for is, is their tobacco or the vaping. I don't know anything about, just like I don't know anything about microbrews. I got sober before they came on the scene. Thank you. If you got any questions?
Yes.
Thank you, Stan, and thank you for your effort to help. And I agree, New Jersey versus Taylor was a really, really interesting case law and Supreme Court decision. What I want to share with you is pna survey.org in Wyoming data. You can look at the stimulant steroid, that kind of usage in Wyoming there and it's, it's actually a lot lower than drugs, alcohol. So, but that's there. There's a lot of information there you'll find interesting.
Thank you.
pna survey.org.
And I bet heroin use in the school is very low too. But it's a drug, if it was used, it'd be, you'd punish the person for it.
Jason, did you have some?
Yeah.
Can I turn your mic on?
Thank you, thank you. So with, with the educational portion too, Stan, in the handbook, every offense there is, they have to attend a tobacco, alcohol educational program. So we, so we do throw that in there as part of, of said thing there. Another thing and goes back to where you were saying the way the law reads, it just has to be reasonable suspicion. And I got to be careful how I say this because it's not in law enforcement capacity and it's not as a this is just me saying, I like to think we hold ourselves to a little bit higher standard and we also add articulable, articulable?
That one.
To that. So just because you can, isn't good enough. You, we all also have to articulate why. So, so that just adds that much more to it than just saying, just because we can, we can. So.
Right. And in that instance, I was more speaking about non-mandatory activities because you have total leniency to do whatever with that. That would be more due to just general student population, right? Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Stan. Very informative. Are there any other visitors' comments? We move on to action items, consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I mentioned, I was doing recognition, but I'm going to say it now because it's going to be the second agenda, but I wanted to just say thank you to Troy and the Transportation.
Thank you to Troy and the Transportation Committee for doing all the work on the bus routes. That information was really helpful.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
We move on to the athletics activities handbook. Brad, do you want to?
I do have a recommendation. So in your packet, and this should also be under recognitions when you do it three or four times. So I would like to recognize Ms. Ingle and Ms. Manders for their efforts, but I do believe in your handbook or in your packet is the handbook that I guess capsulates what the board's efforts were. So I would recommend a 2324 athletics activity handbook as it is presented in your packet.
Move to approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2023, 2024 athletics and activities handbook as presented in our packet. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Carrie. Lisha. Thank you. I, I finally seen it behind Angie, but that's okay. We're asking for an executive session under 16, four dash four oh five little X and 16, four dash four oh five IX for personnel and student issues. Is there a motion?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to go into executive session for the two reasons I already listed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Go ahead. We'll move on to new business. Revisions of personal wages, Brad?
Mr. Chair, in your packet, what I am recommending to you, and I can, I'll just take these one at a time. And so both of these recommendations or all these recommendations are based on either a restructuring of the district office or truly where we are in a need of people with a CDL. So my first recommendation that I have for you is for Taylor Morejelli. And it's, the new position is for HR Director and Federal Funds. And I would recommend that position to you with the duties in your packet. And that position would start off at $70,000.
Unless, unless anybody has objection, we could do them all together. Is that okay?
Altogether? Okay. So moving on, again, in this one is, is, is consistent with the district office. And so Angie under the business manager, and again, these are benefited positions. So the duties as listed there and I would be very comfortable in letting everyone know and duties as assigned since everyone else has that in their title, they should. And I would ask that Angie start that position at $75,000. Also, the next page in your packet, I would ask the board, so going to two positions in the district office with the accounts payable, the board and superintendent secretary and accounts payable that we increase that to a $3 increase for each step there. The next three requests are due to the CDL. So currently we are short three to five bus drivers. So we will be asking all of our staff with the CDL to be doing their jobs on top of the other duties as assigned. So in the column of bus driver and driver subs, I would ask the board for a $3 increase there. I would also ask that of the mechanics position, again, $3 for each step there and also including the transportation assistant. And that would also include the transportation director. And that increase goes from a 70, $61,000 to 67,240. And I believe that's everything that I have at this time, Mr. Chair.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve that recommendation. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And just for everyone's clarification, so downsizing, that's not new money into the budget. Actually, it's saving budget positions because we're saving the number of positions and the benefit packages. Just so everybody knows, it's not changing the overall general fund budget. It's actually saving you money. And we all know that transportation is general fund reimbursable. I said that right, Angie, just for you. So the money that we spend this year, you actually will get back next year. So those changes will reflect in that transportation budget, but then we'll come back to the district at 100% the year after that. But truly, if we don't come up with some drivers, we are going to have some crises with routes which will affect attendance. And I don't know if that will get people's attention, but the big one's going to be on, on your activity days when you know, possibly the middle school has to stay at home because you only have enough drivers to get your high school kids to, to culminate in events. So just so that's on everyone's radar. That's what we're trying to fix there. So anyone with a CDL, we are, they will be to start the year, as you can see in the packet, they will be driving route buses to make sure students are at school. So when you call transportation in the morning, you're going to hit CeeLo because there's no one there to answer the phone.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. So next item, oh, I'm sorry.
Certified resignation.
Thank you. I was so excited to get to this one. I just, I mean, that's so. Last week I was so happy. We were, we were 100% staffed and ready to go. This week I'm not as happy. So with that, I would recommend the resignation of Marty Hosvelt as the middle school Title I math teacher and art teacher and permission to post.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move to approve the certified resignation of Marty Hosvelt as a middle school Title I math and art teacher and position to, and post the position. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to say that I've moved this with regret.
Tough situation. Good, good point.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Classified recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend to you, and I only know her by Nomi Bloom, and so Mr. Chair, I would recommend to you, um and I only know her by Noni Bloom, and so in risk of not getting punched, I'm gonna say Noni Bloom as a custodial for the Outbuildings.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Novella, is that what you would say that? Bloom uh for custodian of the Outbuildings. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. But I have a a motion to amend the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda for the recognition of homeschoolers. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I recommend to the, no, no, I would recognize the homeschool request for Justin and Zany Rich for Kobe and Jace Rich.
Is there a motion to approve?
Been to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, recognize, recognize those homeschoolers or homeschooling, whatever it is. Application, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll move on to Administrator's Report. We're starting in the back of the room. Taryn, did you have anything? I guess you're the only one I, you're the only one I can see.
Yeah, Mr. Hoffman, I don't have much to report. Um we had a really busy summer with summer school. The elementary and middle school hosted sessions every Tuesday and Wednesday, so we had kids in the building all summer. High school took those post-secondary tours, so kids were busy traveling and touring those facilities, and then they're back this week full-time for jumpstart, getting to know some of our new incoming kindergartners. So we're just hitting the ground running.
Any questions for Taryn? Thank you. Sonia?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Does this bother you both?
That's why they should sit at the team.
Uh, just a few things that we're just getting geared up this week to welcome back everybody, and so we're gonna kick off on Friday and just start a whirlwind of PD opportunities and classes and sessions and welcoming teachers back. So we will be doing that. New teachers will start on Monday of next week, and so we will have nine right as of right now anyway. And I do in, I gave you a handout there, and I would just like to extend a welcome and a reminder that on next Thursday, the seventeenth, is when we will have our keynote and welcome back um session in the morning, so you're welcome to come. That starts at eight-thirty in the morning. There's breakfast before that. And then what I also attached along with it, it's in that second page, is we will be having Tac One uh back again this year. So that's our safety trainings that we typically do with staff, and we're gonna do it with staff and students this year. Uh and so you are welcome to join any um of those sessions that are there as well. Uh one that is different this year, just that I would kind of point out, is that we are going to do like an evening um self-defense class. And as with everything, it's overlapping with many things, and so the middle school will be doing their back-to-school welcome, um get to know parents, and we'll be doing this at the same time. So um so not all staff are able to attend if they choose to, but this one is um available. And if we, I've put staff kind of, there is a capacity, uh like a max capacity for that training. So by next week, if we don't meet max, I'm gonna open it up to the public. So just keep that in mind. So if you're interested or know of somebody who might be interested in doing a self-defense class, that may be an opportunity. I guess the other things really, we have uh tomorrow, the confidential accountability results get released to schools. So that's the one where every school will get a not-meeting, meeting, or exceeding expectations. And the public release will be on September first is what we have said. So that will be coming within the next month. And um lastly, as always, there's standards work going on, and so the first page that I gave you is some sessions that you can join if you're interested in listening about health, PE, uh computer science, or refined and performing arts. Um in your email, I also attached what those proposed standards are. The one that um has caused a lot of discussion is the health standards. So there were some health standards that were added to the middle school and high school specifically around suicide prevention. So um you can take a look at the wording on that, and uh there's surveys that you can give input on, or there's live sessions that you can join and to give input on that, because they are collecting public input on all four of those. Math and Science is about um finished with their public input. Uh we're revising a little bit, and then I'll meet next week on that. So other than that, just kind of in full swing. So that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Any questions? Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you.
Oh, Jason.
Not really, not really a question, but for the new board members, Tac One, if you don't know what that is, I would highly recommend showing up and and going through that. Um Joe, Joe and his crew, so um what's that?
If they, if you don't know what Tac One is. If you don't know what Tac One is, it's the active shooter training.
Joe has a very extensive law enforcement background, went on his own to create this company, and he goes nationwide uh and instructs teachers students how to move down hallways if there's an active shooter. There's all kinds of stuff. Um so real good. Yes, yes.
Thank you, Jason.
It's it's good. Um like I said, if you guys can attend, we'll learn some good stuff.
Brandy? We'll move on to you, Brandy.
Thank you. Thank you. Um so we're wrapping up our last week of summer school this week. Summer school went well. We had averaged forty kids kind of come and go around vacations. This year we did do something a little bit different. Um Candace saw kids throughout the summer on Tuesdays. Went really well. She had a full schedule all day, all summer, and so um definitely a beneficial deal, even picked some up through the summer when things came up with families. So I'm glad we were able to offer that. Um and then, yeah, we're just getting ready for this next new year. Letters went out this week, you know, for the exciting news of who's gonna get which teacher. Mr. Bartlett hasn't got his yet, so he's waiting on pins and needles. But if anybody asks, they should be getting them any day now. So we're ready to get rolling.
Any questions for Brandy? Thank you, Brandy.
Tyler, you wanna go next? I would love to. I wanna start with why the post office sends our mail in town, down to Casper to get back in town, and I just wanna know. Anyway, sorry. Um thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's that's handy. Um a couple things. They talked about the summer counseling. Um Nikki Bloom did that too. If you guys remember, that was the Esther Grant that allowed us to do that this summer. I would say both ladies said it was super beneficial for the kids they saw. We had a couple of kids again today in our middle school, and I think then Nikki wrapped up. The Esther Grant will cover that next summer, um and then we'll go from there. But I think there's kids in our community that need that support, and it's great that we have those ladies that can do that. I would share in Brad's, you know, struggles with uh staff shortages. So obviously working on um finding the right candidate for the title math position. Uh I would give kudos to to Carrie Manders. She's gonna step up and go back to the old ways of teaching sixth grade art for us. So we've got that problem solved. She's done that in the past, and she's uh excited to do that, and that's one of the benefits of where we gave her a little flexibility. She was, she was jumping at the opportunity to still be around kids and and cover where needed. So got that piece covered, still working on title math. But so we'll see where we get there. I do have one new staff member to invite you guys down to come see sometime. But Nikki Bloom has uh been working the last couple of years to get her therapy dog officially certified, licensed, insured, all those things. So the puppy will start, well, not puppy, four-year-old, you know, he's an adult by now. But we'll have a therapy dog kind of starting up, staggering in to the middle school, and and we've done that in the past, and I think if you guys can remember, the kids, kids tend to really respond well to that. So I think it's gonna be a good thing to have, but so. So yeah, come down and meet the dog sometime, but that'll get going too. Um and then as Sonia related to, New Student Night is Thursday, August seventeenth, from five-thirty to six-thirty. Now that we've been doing this a while, we're just really gearing towards the sixth graders and and people that are new to us, because our seventh and eighth grade kids and parents have kind of got a pretty good handle on things. Um but you guys are welcome to jump in on that. And then the twenty-first is when we'll do our sixth and ninth grade jumpstart all day. Don Stevenson is once again gonna be firing up the grill for burgers and hot dogs for the freshmen and the sixth graders, and and again, you guys are always welcome to come down and see that, because I do think that's a pretty good day for getting our sixth graders into the building. The twenty-first. And otherwise, unless you guys have any questions, all the same stuff everybody else said, busy stuff.
So for that.
Turn your mic on, please.
For that, were you, were you looking for two or just still the one employee?
Now, well, so you know, Marnie's skill set was unique. I mean, unless you don't see a lot of math, math teachers that also dabble in the art pretty well, you know, so I think long-term for the viability of sixth grade art, we've got to come up with probably a different solution. Whether that's Carrie, whether that's other, you know, ways around it. I think that's what we gotta look at. As you guys are aware, the math support is is a need, you know, that's Brandy does a really nice job of managing that grant, and we visited about it this summer. You know, it could be reading too. It could be a variety of things. Uh they did cut some title funding, so there's still some questions to answer that way as far as, okay, how do we, how do we staff that position and get that support for kids, and how do we pay for it? And I mean, how many times you guys heard that recently? But yes, we have one opening right now that I hope can can, we can find the right person and and provide that support. With our clientele lately, uh that title math position and and Marnie specifically, I mean, it was a variety of things too, where she was providing some support for for students on IEPs, and she's jumping in when we're short on teachers and short on subs, and it's just everybody matters, and every role is important. And so when you, when you're missing one, it's gonna be tough. So so hopefully we'll get something figured out.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Bryce?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just looking forward to starting the school year fully staffed. That's gonna be really nice to have uh Mr. Thomas joining our team. He's already been in the building. He's a new math teacher. Um he's already been in the building, doing some things, getting his classroom ready, so it's excited to see him in there and and getting after it. It's funny, I sent out a beginning of the year letter the other day, and so I've received some emails from some students who have already changed their mind of classes they wanted to take in the spring, and and they're excited to come in and, you know, get those adjusted and ready to go. And then I got another email from a kid. He's like, uh, this letter's too early. That's uh, it was, it was pretty funny. Uh so there's varying degrees of excitement from the students, of course. Today, I just wanted to highlight um Alicia Carey and I went down to new administrators training for the WHSA. I went two years ago, my first year as the principal, and it's, it's a lot of information, because they just you know, throw the book at you the first, and you just have to try to absorb as much as you can. And so it was good personally for me to go back with having some experience and background knowledge of using those things a little bit while working with Mike the last few years. But then also for those two gals to be able to um receive that information, discuss it, and then the two and a half hour drive home. Also, we discussed a lot about what we had learned throughout the day to kind of cement some things and talk about how we were gonna apply all those procedures. So it was just a nice training to attend a day down in Casper.
Any questions for Bryce? Thank you, Bryce.
Thank you.
Angie?
What you get out of playing sports is so much more about life skills and, you know, just becoming stronger as an individual, learning to deal with adversity, learning to uh approach and and challenges and and taking risks and things like that, you know, and and the old adage, we learn more from our state, our mistakes than we do our successes is is certainly true. And I don't know, uh Coach Vaughn, I always, he's, he's like a moral victories, he's not a big fan of.
None of us are, but our, but that's what we've spent the last fifteen minutes talking about is is if you're handed a moral victory by guys, you should celebrate it, right?
Exactly, and that's exactly right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have update on the one hundred A. Um when I presented the budget, that I told you that the formula was broken, so it wasn't. They still do not have an update. Uh um the email I received today, it is they do not have a timeframe for the review and the certification process. It is unknown when they'll receive everything, so. But they will not, um we won't get a letter if we're late.
They should give.
I thought that was nice. So I not really fun for first time.
So they're gonna send us the amount of money, any amount of money that you put on the budget and send down to?
Hopefully.
Okay.
Eventually. Yeah, eventually.
Okay.
That was all I had.
Any questions? Thank you, Angie. Bo, did you have anything?
Um, yeah, just real quick. Um I guess I just kind of wanna give a shout out to my crew, um Mike Peterson and uh Marian Gonzalez. Again, I'm super blessed to have them. They um, they do, our our summertime is truly our busiest time in tech. Um and I think when teachers roll in, we'll be good to go. Um all computers are image, boards are updated, printers are clean. They did a great job. Uh switched out carts. We got brand-new charging carts. Um did a great job. Other than that, I'm just kind of finishing up a couple of projects. Um doors and cameras, they should be here Saturday, Sunday. As we said out there, we actually thought about another door I might add too. So it's just, it's a never-ending project, so. Server project is done. We're super happy with that. So so right now our servers have uh five years of coverage. We got both active and passive um uh protection. So we're sitting really good there, and uh booster, uh cell phone booster, radio booster, um signed off. They have everything. We're just waiting on equipment to come in, so I'm assuming we'll probably knock it out over a weekend. I gotta talk to Rick at Rick's Electric, and we'll just we'll get it in when we can. So once that happens, we'll have better um cell service and radio service out at the elementary, so. And really, that's all I have unless you have questions.
Any questions for Bo? Thank you, Bo. Are you ready for a report, Casey? You look kind of like a deer in the headlights there. I don't know.
Well, um school hasn't started, like I said. So however, uh next week, we do plan the the student council. We're gonna have an executive meeting to kind of figure out like how we really wanna run things and to get all of the the basics down, so to speak, so that way there's no issues when school does start up. And then that following uh later in the week, sometime that weekend, uh we plan to get as many as the, as many of the council members together to have a it's sort of like a barbecue kind of thing, just like get to know everybody, that everybody knows everybody's faces. And then uh hopefully we can start school up all smooth, get some meetings going, and have a successful year from there. But this is step one, so we'll see how it goes.
Thank you. You weren't ready for that. But you did a good job. And just know that there's a quiz after every meeting. No, there's not, but uh I will call on you every meeting you're here, so just, and if you don't have anything, that's okay. Jason, did you?
If you could, I'd like a a list of the council members for appreciate it.
Brad, I guess you're up.
Is it?
Yeah, Brad, go ahead.
Any questions for Casey first? Okay, so um I'm gonna sort of piggyback on the back of Bo. So it's been an interesting summer, to say the least. Um I would first wanna thank everybody, um whether it be transportation, whether it be everybody in this room, uh and especially this person to my right. It is personnel changes almost weekly. And so, you know, it it is easy to drive over the overpass and say, you know, when in the world did they stop doing the football field and turn it into a clover patch? I get that. Um I heard it. But you know, uh John Perel and and Jim Boehner have pitched in uh every third day, they're more in the football field. And it's people like that, and truly Bo said it, but I mean, I've I've asked Bo to be a cop because we lost some equipment and I needed some video equipment pulled up. He's on vacation, and he does that. And every one of them have done the same. Um I know Angie has had a growing period. a growing period and it will continue. She does not realize that it really doesn't get much easier. Um, but with that, I think if everyone can understand going into this school year that if we can all do whatever we need to do for kids together, it'll work. If you try to do this in isolation, you will leave the profession fairly quick. Um, because it was too much to take on with one person. Um, so with that, um, you know, I'm just, I, I'm, I mean, I'm happy to have those that are here. I think we're blessed with those that are here. Um, and really I am excited. Um, it's my thirty-first year here. Um, and I can hardly wait to see what the chair has to share with with, he left us last time with the best days of our lives, or this is the best day of our life. And so he's got to sort of top that one. So with that, um, again, if you need anything, reach out to CeeLo, she can find me. Um, uh, we are going to be doing a wide range of different tasks just to make sure it works for students and it works for staff. Um, I don't think there'll be a lot of office time sitting there wondering what has to happen next. So with that, thank you for the jobs that you do and the time that you commit for our young people and our staff as well because I know that your job doesn't stop either. So thank you.
Any questions for Brad? And thank you for the compliment. So any board member have any reports? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um Wept, uh Wept is the Wyoming Educators Benefit Trust, and that's where we get all the entrance uh products for our district. Um, our, our Wept Board is meeting Monday. And the big thing we're doing is I think we're going to spend about three hours learning more about pharmacy benefit management. And I would trade you that for three days of W H S A. Because it is one deep and broad and very dry topic, but we are trying to figure out if if we can take that over and not pay someone else to do it, which would be a benefit to our members. So we will power through that and, and get that done. We're hoping to make a final decision on that by the end of the year.
Any questions for Dana? Thank you, Dana. Jason, you have anything? Dana? Okay, seeing. Sure.
I just thought of something. There, there are a couple of people and I know there's more than this, but Don Williams and Brandy Gregory, Brandy Evenson. Um, they sort of jumped out of their comfort zone and, and decided to help with maintenance. And the rock work that, that you see here, once the sidewalk's done, it'll be completed. But throughout the elementary school and that, um it really does look nice. And I'm here to tell you that was a miserable event. And I think they would make every motion in the world to say that the summer help next year probably starts off at a hundred and twenty an hour. Because ten dollars an hour just doesn't cut it. Um, but it's people like that that really, um you know, if they don't do that, it doesn't get done, guys. It just, that's the way it happens. So, um there was a couple of days it was hot and it was humid and they were hand picking rocks to put in there. And you know, the guy thing is you just run over there with a bulldozer and push it. And, and then you shift a couple and it's okay. That's not what they did. So that's why it looks much better than if a guy would have done it. So I want to make sure that that gets the recognition. And the other one is summer. Um, this was my first time where I got to have the new bookmobile. Thank you. And the good thing is it was new. However, I've never had to jumpstart a bookmobile. Uh, because a bookmobile has a generator on top of the starter. So poor Adam has to come out because moi can't figure out how to jumpstart the god darn bookmobile. Um, and when he did it, it was very gracious, but um, again, one of those little things that go a long ways for kids. Um, and, and it's just, I think if you don't really take a time to look at all the offerings, I mean, Tamra's summer program, I don't know how many kids are involved in that thing. And the amount of stuff and planning, um it is pretty amazing what, what we can offer. And I don't know if we often celebrate those kinds of things. But I, I would be remiss and, and if I left anyone out, I apologize, but those were the two that I last saw kneeling in front of the door. Is there anyone else that was with that group? I miss anyone.
Thank you, Brad. We'll move on to future agenda items. Anybody have a future agenda item? Well, that was easy. Discussion on the W S B A regional meeting. I guess the request kind of is to possibly move our August thirtieth meeting to August twenty-third. So that we can go to the W S B A regional fall meeting. Does anybody want to do that? Yeah, we will need a motion to do it.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to change our meeting date from August thirtieth to August twenty-third. Uh, and we probably need to advertise that in a paper or wherever. Um.
We need a school suburban, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know. Well, let's vote on it first here. Any more discussion on it other than the school suburban? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. How many plan on going to, it's in Gillette, right? At the same place? I'm going. You're going, Jason? Paul, you going?
I will have to check.
Okay. Billy?
Yeah, put me down.
Okay, Billy will go. Sean?
I'm going.
Joe? So everybody's going. Paul is a question mark. I don't know about Tina.
Because we have to do it. I have to reserve.
I'll drive.
I have to drive because I go in a different direction.
You guys want to ride with me?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make it. I mean, I'll make it work.
And I'll, I'll drive. So we won't need a suburban. I can take ours.
Okay, I guess not. I'll probably just cut across. Are you going, Brad? You're going?
Fourteen with the Drucker.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no reason.
Okay.
And I can take six.
Okay. I guess everybody, we just don't know about Tina for sure. We'll be there. And anybody else that wants to go along, it's a real exciting meeting.
And we really should have ice cream with Jerry Green after.
Yeah, we gotta go, yeah.
Be his birthday.
That would be, yeah.
Pretty close to his birthday, anyone? Every year.
One last thing, uh for discussion items is the W S B A Golden Bell Award. I would like to nominate Tom Wright and I'll do the write-up if, if you would like me to do that. Uh, and I think that's due in October. So if that's okay with the board, I just okay, I'm going to do that. I have nothing else, I guess. Meeting.
I'll call to order the Eastern Weston County rec board agenda. Approval of the agenda. We got a motion to approve, properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Any recognitions? Seeing none, we'll move on to visitor comments. Oh, go ahead.
So, um, I wish I had it with me, but I don't. One of the topics at hand is um, outdoor recreation with the idea of a better use of the L A K lake. Um, because it has been shut down to the motorcraft. A lot of other communities have applied for some grants. Um, a lot of them run it through their rec area, but it basically looks like a little beachfront property where um, some of them ran out um surfboards, uh tubes, uh, things of that nature. Of course, we would have to have an agreement with the L A K people. Um, but it is something that I know it's, it's out there. It's been a, a topic of conversation. And I will just share that, the video clip with you. It's a very popular concept um in Colorado. Because Colorado is experiencing the same thing with the zebra mussels in the boats and, and that kind of stuff, but trying to look at ways of enhancing um outdoor recreation, since we really don't have an outdoor pool anymore. Although the location's probably not ideal, but um, it's just an idea that I will quote float by you.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else? Okay, moving on. Action items, consent agenda.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor, properly seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Passes. I don't have anything for old business. Anything for new, Brad? I haven't got anything. Okay, anything for discussion items? Seeing none, agenda.